Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 22 meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for the day is out of Psalms at 65:5, "You faithfully answer our prayers with awesome deeds, O God, our Savior; you are the hope of everyone on earth, even those who sail on distant seas." And I have the dog from the kennel this morning. It's on now, come on. Good morning, everyone. We have a little two-year-old male, like a wire-hair terrier. He was found in Lorraine with, running with his sister, who is solid white. So if you want a set, you can come down to our kennel, it'll be ready on Thursday, or Friday?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. And then, she'd make, he'd make a great pet. We have only seventeen or nineteen dogs at the kennel, that's like amazing. So thank you for everybody that's coming out to adopt our dogs from the kennel. Like I always say, adopt, don't shop, they make great pets and be happy to have you come down and take one home. Thank you. help us get these dogs adopted when we get full. And we're working on three years of not putting any dogs down due to space at the kennel. So I attribute great work over there to everyone involved. Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Okay, we have a proclamation for Mary Lou Golfski.
We do. Mary Lou, maybe you want to get those dogs, you'll have plenty of time to take care of them, no? Oh darn it! Okay, in the matter of expressing our best wishes to Mary Lou Golfski on her retirement from Lorraine County, whereas Mary Lou Golfski announced retirement from her position as Director of the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services effective March 31, 2017. Mary Lou is recognized for over thirty-seven years of service, which began on April 22, 1979, as a Training Officer II for County Welfare and Human Services. Mary Lou was promoted to Administrative Assistant III on November 13, 1983, reassigned to Assistant County Human Service Administrator III on January 20, 1985, promoted to County Human Services Administrator V on August 11, 1985, and her title changed to Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services Director on December 17, 2000. Mary Lou has served on various boards during her tenure, such as Lorraine County Children and Families Council, Lorraine County Workforce Investment Board, and We Three, Board Women Empowered, Educated and Employed. She is an active member of the Illyria Rotary Club, and has also served as an officer in the Northeast Ohio Directors Association, and is the second longest-serving Director in the state of Ohio. Mary Lou's first-class leadership, expertise, good nature, and sense of humor will be greatly missed by her colleagues. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, Ohio, that we hereby express our sincere gratitude for the service that Mary Lou Golfski has provided to the county of Lorraine and its citizens. Retirement will be the beginning of a new chapter and a continuation of enjoying favorite pastimes like traveling, hiking, biking, swimming, and golfing. We wish all the best to Mary Lou, her husband John, and daughters Sarah and Jessica. Signed this day, March 22, 2017, Lori Kokowski, Ted Kallo, and Matt Lundie. So let's give her a round of applause. Mary Lou, we have a really beautiful clock for you along with the presentation, so if you want to come up and if you want to introduce your staff, the floor is yours, you deserve it. Thirty-seven years, you can do whatever you want.
Looks like you're not going skiing this week though.
No, not at all. Thank you so much, very sweet.
It's like a gold watch.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you very much. It's been a real pleasure, honor. I've been blessed with a fabulous staff. I'll get emotional. I don't know where the time went. I really don't. I've enjoyed it. Thank you so much.
You've been a real asset.
Thank you.
The thirteen years we've been here, Lori and I.
Yeah.
Very professional.
The way you've handled your department, the issues you do, and the amount of staff and the constituents.
I got a great staff.
And the constituents, you know, you have to deal with, because we do get phone calls up here.
Oh yeah, I know that.
How you handle them, you do a wonderful job, we're really going to miss you. If the person filling your shoes, half the size anyway, would be all right.
Thank you, Ted.
Commissioners that we had to deal with?
We won't go there, Jim.
We go back to the rooms with the smoke so thick we could barely sit in there.
Yeah.
A long time. Been a, been a miss you, Mary Lou.
Thank you.
It's been a real twenty-three-plus years of your thirty-seven, so I, you know, it's, I never had any problems, never had to look over your work, never had to look over your department's work. Usually got a real quick brush and right past.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for all the years that we have worked together, it's, it's been my privilege and my honor.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to, yeah. Mary Lou was here when I started.
She was so much younger than you, Jerry.
You know, when I started, I didn't know a lot about government, and Mary Lou taught me a lot of things, and she was.
I don't know about that.
She, she has really been one of my favorite people.
Thank you.
We talk a lot about travel.
Travel.
She, she has been easy to work with and unbelievably knowledgeable about your job. You really will be missed, Mary Lou.
Thank you.
I was going to pass some kind of law that you couldn't retire before, before me, but I guess I can't stop you.
Thank you so much.
You know, if you're traveling somewhere and you need an extra person to come along, I'll be joining you in the not-too-far distant future.
Hey, 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 Jerry.
She has, she has, she has been really one of the pleasures to, to work with all these years.
Yeah, Mary Lou, I just want to thank you for your, for your public service. I haven't had a chance to work with you as long as my colleagues and other folks up here, but, but I can tell you that, you know, when you're in positions like we're in, that, boy, you sleep a lot better at night knowing, you know, there's somebody in leadership like you running things and, and knowing that it's going to get done. You know, I was approached by a reporter recently who was asking about you, and I said it seems like with her, regardless of how high the, they set the bar, she always finds a way to jump over it. And it's, you know, you have a very tough job, you know, having worked in the state legislature. I know how, how we just make things very easy for folks to, to implement, day in and day out. I can say that, you can't maybe quite yet, but, but of course, I'm being a little sarcastic, but, but it's, it's amazing how you've always risen to the challenge and you've always gotten things done. And I, I know anytime I'm out in the community, I always hear such great things about you as well, too, and I tell people it's been a real privilege, even though it's been for a short period of time, to, to, to work with you and see the amazing work that you do. And, and thank you, made the community a better place.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you.
Do you want to introduce anyone?
Can I introduce my staff?
Absolutely, bring them up.
Okay. In the red jacket is my replacement, that will be Barb Tamas. She is currently the Child Support Enforcement Administrator, and she was promoted from within, so we're really happy about that. Next to her is Rula Raphael. She will replace Barb as the Child Support Administrator. Next to Rula is Jeff King. I don't think I need to say a whole lot about Jeff King. He's been there thirty-nine years.
He's a little longer than you.
Yes, thirty-nine years. Jeffrey is our Fiscal Administrator, and he's helped keep us in the black, and he always goes, is it black or red, which is supposed to be the right way? But we've managed to get through, and I'll miss. Oh, okay, okay. Behind Jeffrey is Diane Sonnigl. She's a Income Maintenance Administrator.
Duck, Jeff, duck.
And next to Diane is Kristen Whitman. She's the new HR Administrator. Next to Kristen is Sandy Morocco. She's the Income Maintenance Administrator. And last but not least is Megan Kaufman, and she's an IM Administrator All, and they help make me look really good. They've done a wonderful job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We, we do have a cake if they would like to stay through some comic relief. The, the, so it's in the back, we can just get to our agenda.
You just want to make them stay for a full Commissioners' meeting.
I want to torture them just like, just on the way out, too.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments for today? Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Madam President, I do have a number of personnel issues I'd like to discuss with the Board, specifically some potential hires at the Collection Center, ongoing labor negotiations United Steel Workers of America, United Auto Workers of America, purchase of real estate, sale of real estate, impending legal matter. All those topics are allowed on the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. So I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into executive session and we discuss those items in detail. Thank you.
Okay. Number nine, authorize James Cordez to accept and enter into an agreement with an electricity supplier for Lorraine County facilities for a thirty-six-month period, starting in May 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I didn't quite understand it either. The, rather than going out with a lengthy RFP and wasting a whole bunch of time, you know, there's times we're trying to save ten thousand, we've spent fifteen thousand doing it. And, and so I've tried to explain to our folks that, that a lot of times you're leaving a buck on the table because it's too expensive to get the buck. And that, that's what it has to do with all these RFPs for electric service and the markets, they keep moving all the time. CCAO has a program where they'll, they'll sample the market, looking for a deal, but you only have a few hours to lock in the rate. It's much like we do when we issue bonds, we're watching the market, we go to market. I usually have a few hours to, to accept the rate, sign off on, on the bonds. I, I want to do the electric this way, I don't want to spend all these hours and days with RFPs and submissions and, and then watch us lose the market while we're doing it, and never mind how much time and effort we put into that. So I'm going to look at the CCAO piece, see if I can capture an aggressive rate, and you're just going to have to trust that we're going to get the best rate possible. I can tell you, energy is, is less costly than it was when we signed it for our last deal. I know we're going to save money, how much I really don't know, but it could be in three years, things have changed, and we could have saved more if we had waited, it's just one of those things. I don't want to go any more than three years, I think that the, the picture isn't clear on, on where energy costs are going, going to go in the next couple of years. I may come back and tell you, we only grabbed the one-year rate because it looked like the markets may fluctuate again. So this is just to give us flexibility.
So this is up to three years, as I was going to say.
Correct.
It almost seems like with the way the markets fluctuate, you might be better off on a short term.
Well, maybe. I, I, I just don't know right now, I have to wait for the results to come in. Once, once, once they go to market, on the spot market, we have like three or four hours, we gotta, we gotta take care of that.
That's Palmer Energy, which was asserted by the Commissioners' Association, which delved into all types of energy. So again, it's a spot market, you grab it when it's there, you hope you did the right job, and, and we locked in last time at three years, and we felt we were at the lowest rate at the time, and then things tumbled a year later.
You know, we weren't unique.
Everybody, I mean, no, it wasn't unique.
Energy was on the way up at the time.
Four-dollar gas.
Everybody was trying to get, get a, get a, a long-term strategy to, to lock in a rate, and within several months, we saw the collapse of OPEC, cheaper oil, historically cheaper oil, and which, you know, drove energy costs completely down, and then natural gas prices fell right behind it, and, and so we ended up with, with a contract that was more costly than we had waited. But the people that are critical of that, I wanted to pick my lottery number.
Right, exactly. It's a moving target.
Because we, everybody does the best they can with the information they have at hand, and, and that's what we're going to do this time. Hopefully, we'll be successful, but I don't see energy rates moving quickly in any, any direction, but they are volatile. So this is what that's about.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Number ten, support resolutions to urge state legislatures to take immediate action as part of the biannual budget process to protect counties and transit authorities against the loss of Medicaid-managed care organization sales tax revenue.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
All kinds. It's part of my report, though, when I get to that, but I've been in Columbus the last few days working on the state budget issues, legislative role with the County Commissioners' Association, and basically, we are asking the state to not just give us this one-time pass-through of fixing our shortage for a year, but to replace the revenue loss from the elimination. Three states in the country, us, California, and Michigan, were found to be not charging sales tax properly on the Medicaid-managed care organizations. It was a simple fix, but as always in Ohio in our state legislature, something simple never seems to happen. Michigan and California, what they did is they just expanded sales tax base to cover everything. No big deal, expand the base, and actually would be an increase to state government and county governments in regards to sales tax. But again, they've got this Grover Norquist way of thinking that everything's got to be tax-neutral, so in their case, they're saying, sorry, we're not going to expand the tax base, we're going to eliminate it, and we're going to, if I pass my half a percent sales tax increase, we'll plug you in one year of your shortfall.
Well, in essence, we'll give you two million for one year, and we'll take twenty million out of your county forever.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what the.
That's, that's what it works out to.
I'm not, I'm not a great guy at math, but you know, you don't have to be brilliant to understand that.
Right, so, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion, most of the counties and CCAO prepared the resolution asking us to support a full replacement, long-term, in regards to the MCO sales tax issue. Again, it's real simple, Michigan and California did it, boom, see, you just expand it to everyone, and it actually becomes a bump, especially in regards to our governor, who's going to be having a state-of-the-state in another week or ten days, saying that we're in a recession. And I'll talk about more things in my report.
Wasn't he on the national stage indicating the Ohio model and the success we had here just several months ago? Now we're in a recession?
Yeah, yeah, the model didn't quite work, the glue didn't stick, I guess.
Was it glue or fiction?
I'll get to that in the rest of my report at the end, but yeah, this is really important, we're trying to have all the Commissioners, there's a lot of testimony going on. Actually, I could have stayed in Columbus from here, say testify on another issue, but again, I'll recap that in my report, but extremely important to get everybody wrapped around this, that it's not just a one-time fix, we need it for a permanent fix, so, thank you.
Yeah, according to policy matters, I think they were projecting our county to be, be impacted by about $2.4 million.
Right, per year.
Per year.
They want to, they want to plug us, 2.35 is the number that the governor proposed.
Exactly.
But then nothing after that.
Right, and as you pointed out, this is.
We need to answer, we need to answer this real quick.
Yeah, just sweep it.
We can, I guess, I didn't even bring mine.
Sorry, we had to interrupt that, right now, there's a state tornado drill to go through emergency management systems, and we get notified by phone, so we just had to sweep our phones, so we answered it.
But, yeah, just to continue on, as you pointed out, the, the fix to this makes common sense, and that is that it would be applied to all managed care organizations instead of only to those that provide Medicaid services. That's what other states have done, that's been met with approval. And this, obviously, as we talked about, was a concern that we had, that we knew was on the horizon for us and was going to take place. But as I found when I worked in Columbus with the, the promise to Grover Norquist is, you know, not to, not to raise taxes, so anything they do supposedly needs to be revenue-neutral. That's why you'll see a, a proposed reduction in income tax, but then you'll see an increase in the sales tax to offset that. The other reality is that since 2010, the state has cut almost a billion dollars a year in resources to local government throughout the state. A lot of that due to cuts in local government funding, I think the MCO overall for local governments, what, 200 million?
Two oh nine.
Yeah, two oh nine, 209 million dollars, so. So once again, another glaring and glowing example of how Columbus has abandoned local government. As I've said before, we're left on our own to take care of our issues and our problems without the support of state government. The sad part is that your tax dollars go down to Columbus, and they're not coming back. And until you start demanding that your tax dollars come back, they're going to keep playing these games, and then they put us in the position of looking like the bad guys at the local level, whether it's the mayor of a community, council members, county commissioners, you know, that we're the ones who are always saying we need more revenue, because the state just keeps taking us to the cleaners. And this is another example of that. And then the governor on top of it had to make an insulting comment about, well, we'll get him the one-time money, and they'll just go and basically foolishly spend it anyhow, I think was kind of a interpretation of his sarcastic comment.
And the problem being with that, Matt, though, tying it into it, though, the state gets to replace its lost revenue.
Right.
They're, they're fixed.
Right.
We get a one-time shot, and then you're on your own, guys.
Right.
So I mean, that's significant dollars for locally again, so I mean, it's really important that they do this the right way.
But, but I'm amazed.
I don't have much hope, but.
Right, when we try to communicate this to the community, people say, well, you're just being political, and you're picking on the governor, and, and, you know, you're, you're making things up to cover your tracks. I mean, these are the facts, you know, it's all right here. And if you want the information, we're more than willing to share that with you, but once again, it's another sucker punch from the governor to your communities.
Yeah, I know, we don't deal with income tax, but I feel sorry for the municipalities who may, they want all that money to start coming to Columbus and then sending it back. They might send it back, all of it at one time, but future down the road, who knows if they start cutting into that, too, so.
Yeah, get ready, your schools are going to be cut, too.
Right. Major concerns.
Terrible.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Number eleven, authorized payment of $2,000 to Boyer &amp; Co Home for Funerals in Lorraine for indigent veteran Doyle Lawrence Gibson from Illyria, and indigent veteran Robert Wayne Ellis from Lorraine in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5901.25.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Number twelve, approved change order number two in an amount not to exceed $1,870.40 to NNN Construction in Wakeman for the Phase One Site Development Package, courthouse for revised piping and tie-in of relocated fire hydrant, and extend new storm line for South Edition.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Number thirteen, under Children and Families Council, amend Resolution 16409, adopted on June 29, 2016, approving and entering into a purchase-of-service contract with Cleveland Hearing and Speech Center for Help Me Grow for Sign Language Interpretation for fiscal year 2017. Amendment is to reflect an increase in the contract from $500 to $4,000, effective retroactive to January 21, 2017, through June 30, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Number fourteen, under Job and Family Services, award contract to Ray Giddage Heating and Air Conditioning in Lorraine, Ohio, in the amount of $45,921 for the Lorraine County Job and Family Services Rooftop Unit Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Number fifteen, authorize a procurement plan for Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and the Lorraine County Child Support Enforcement Agency in accordance with federal, state, and local laws, effective retroactive to March 1, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Number sixteen, approve an advertising request for a public hearing to solicit comment on social service programs and funding.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Commissions for number sixteen, I believe that's the Title 20, right? That's Title 20 Programming. The, so the, that's, that's, that's just information on what those, those grant, and they're a block grant type of environment can be used for, so it, that's another area that right now is under siege at the federal level with regard to those dollars, so I don't know how long we're going to continue to see those either, and they support all kinds of wonderful things in our communities. Well, they support that, and I spoke extensively with Mary Lou about adult protective services. A huge amount of that money goes to adult protective services. It's a mandate to fund adult protective services, and without Title 20 dollars, I don't know what we would do with, for adult protective services. So the lion's share does go there, correct, Mary Lou, of, of the Title 20 funds? There are some other programs that are funded, but, but that's, that's where most of the requirements for those services are met from, and, and, you know, of course, we're going to, we're going to have to keep a close eye on where that goes. So there's some concerns.
Yeah, helping people is supposed to be a good thing, and I always think of, you told me about seeing the HBO series with LBJ and his phone conversation where he asked the one individual, so you're just a, just a Christian on Sunday, right? So sometimes people forget.
I think he said, "Are you one of them, are you a Christian all week, or are you just one of them go-to-Sunday Christians?"
Go-to-Sunday Christians, exactly. So, but, you know, I believe we have a responsibility to help lift people up and help them get their lives on track, so.
Okay. Number 17, under Workforce Development Agency, authorize a procurement plan for Workforce Development Agency in accordance with federal, state, and local laws effective retroactive to March 1 of 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Number 18, under the Engineer Department, authorize James Cordez to make application, enter into and execute a water pollution control loan fund agreement for planning, design, and construction of the Pheasant Run, excuse me, sanitary sewer rehabilitation sewer district improvement number 123, and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, please.
Both these resolutions have to do with the project out of Pheasant Run. There was a, we produced the tentative assessments. I just want to briefly reiterate a few of those things. I had talked to the media about some of those costs. The actual cost per homeowner were about $8,000. The tentative assessments are in the area of $14,000 to $15,000. So, to understand why, we based the assessments on a 30-year payback schedule with a three-and-a-quarter to three-and-a-half percent interest rate and a default factor because people do default. And you still, funny part is they default, but we still got to make the debt service on the loans. I anticipate doing much better than that. I anticipate the interest rate being hopefully somewhere between 1.75 and 2% on these low-interest loans that we're eligible for.
Be a melded rate, Jim, between regular financing and whatever we get in regards to low interest.
And that's what I'm going to look at. We're going to look at a lot of options with regard to funding this. Right now, Commissioner, I cannot get you money cheaper, less costly than what we can get it from these loans. So, I'm going to be looking at both these options and some in-house placement possibly with some of the notes. The, but those folks that want to pay and not have an assessment, their cost is about a little bit over $8,000. This is all carrying costs. It's much like a mortgage. And the further you go out, the more the interest is. So, when they're looking at, they're looking at $14,000 or $15,000 plus interest. That is an all-inclusive with the interest. Again, that will come down. I expect the rates to be more aggressive, at least a percent, maybe a percent and a quarter, more aggressive than what we figured. The 30 years, we can get loans for 20 years, 30 years, or 40 years. I'm not really happy at 30 years. I think it's too long. This is an onsite, the system, we're going to repair it, but it's still an old system there. The homes are not new. Some of them are fairly old. But we're trying to make it affordable. I'm going to hold off applying for these loans until after we have the assessment hearings and try to take the pulse of what we hear there. I would prefer this to be 20-year loans, but that drives up the payment initially, but it also drives down the overall carrying cost for the interest rate. And so, we have to go through all of those options. And I was talking to our outside folks yesterday. We have, it takes about 90 days to make the application. We've already been certified. That's why we talked about it last year. We're cued. Now, we just simply have to take the project to them, since the facilities planning area was changed, which was one of the last criteria that had to be met. But I'm going to hold off for a while until after those hearings, and then I think we need to have more conversation about how we want to package and wrap this for everybody involved. Some of the costs are going to be hard for folks down there.
I just want to stress that, you know, I mean, the part of the story was kind of on the jump page of the story, talking about the homeowners' association coming to us, you know, asking for the help. And here we are, trying to provide assistance and help them through this difficult situation. So, I don't want anybody to think this is something that's being forced on anybody. It's not.
Not by us.
Not by us. But certainly, there are some pretty severe consequences, I guess, if they don't move forward with the help that we're trying to provide.
Well, and that's the issue. And there's been comments out there, and we're going to address them during the public hearings. You know, I read one comment where, why is a tap-in fee for new homes to be billed $4,000, but the residents are being charged $14,000? Residents aren't being charged $14,000. They're being charged a little over $8,000. Now, it's still a lot more than $4,000. Why? That's because their sewers are in the ground on-site already, and they're failing. New development, the roads aren't in, the sewers aren't in. So, that's a cost of continuing that development that'll be absorbed in lot development when the sewers and roads go in. We never get a real chance to explain all these things, and it's distressing. So, what the $4,000 represents is the upsize on the force main all the way to La Grange, and it's a big force main. And I don't mean big in how capacity, I mean, it's a long way for a force main. And we had a big lift station down there and equalization system that's going, and all of that has been divided over about 823 potential homes. There's only 523 thereabouts right now out there. So, as those other lots develop, if they develop, that money's going to go to the association, and it can be distributed and sorted out with the membership of the association at that time. But the only thing that any future development is responsible is the upsize on the sewer right to Pheasant Run. Those folks that want to build on their lots out there are not responsible for the in-ground system and all the things that have failed out there. That's the difference in the cost, and that's where it comes from. And I really wish folks would just pick up the phone, and I don't even think it's the Pheasant Run's people making these comments. It's just people making comments and confusing a whole bunch of other people. But we still need these resolutions. I have borrowed enough money. I don't need cash flow right now. We're in our own notes right now. We're recapitalizing the note costs, and I have until November before I have to retire those notes. My goal was to have this money, retire those notes, and then start drawing on construction funds, and we hope to be done next summer sometime with this project. So, we're not in a cash flow issue. I just want to let you know, I'm not going right out right now and borrowing this money until we have those hearings and we have further discussions. We have, we still have some options. The one option we don't have is not doing the project.
Right.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Number 19, authorize James Cordez to make application, enter into and execute a water pollution control loan fund agreement for planning, design, and construction of the Pheasant Run Lift Station and Force Main Sewer District Improvement number 124, and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Number 20, under Sheriff Department, authorize Lorain County Sheriff to apply for 2017 through 2018 DARE grant in the amount of $22,495.20, which represents 50% of the base salary of an officer for the nine-month school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
I yield to counsel. I want to have some cake.
It's going to be a while. I got longer.
Oh, no.
Oh, good God.
We'll make mine short.
How many skinny chicken dinners did you go to, actually?
I wish.
Mr. Ennis?
I do have one matter of pending litigation to discuss with the commissioners in executive session.
Okay.
Mine will be short. Not too much excitement going on in my life this past week. I did attend this past Thursday, the Lorain County Community College Board meeting at the Wellington Campus to swear in Tom Smith as their new board member. Tom was our latest appointment to that board. They have a working board. It was from 3:00 to 6:00, and it was, they actually do work during their board meetings. So, it was nice to hear all the different people that attended that meeting. Sad to say that I had to go out to Northeastern Church for the celebration of life for my neighbor that used to live across the street from me, Laverne Witherall. He was a retired fireman in the city of Elyria. Him and his wife, I always consider them my little angels across the street. They were always out, sitting out, looking over my way, and just felt really safe with them over there. And they, unfortunately, they moved to another part of Elyria, and he just recently passed away, so he'll be missed by me and many other people. So, end of my report.
That was quick. Yeah, it was a busy week. Spent a lot of time, again, with the Commissioners Association. Yesterday, I was actually down there for a long, drawn-out discussion with Department of Rehab and Corrections. Gary Moore, for some reason, they're talking about making felony fives no longer able to go to prison, and it's being discussed through the budget bill and not through a legislative process. But an offer of $40 million to the counties, which, when they do their whole breakdown, it means about $33 per day per felony five that we would keep here to help them lower their prison population.
It's a cost of $90, $90.
About $90, yeah. So, and not necessarily being, but $33 per day to figure out how we're going to do it. Additional probation officers into CBCF. There are six or seven counties that are pilot program. Most of them said it was working to agree with them, but not the long term. This is for a two-year biennial budget, as you're aware, which means nothing ever stays when it comes to being a grant. But we had court of common pleas judges there. We had court administrators. We had sheriffs there. We had municipal court judge there, along with the commissioners, CBCF, and adult probation representatives, about 50 people grilling on Gary Moore. After about four hours of long, drawn-out discussion for a two-hour meeting, the Commissioners Association is actually testifying this morning, and we're going to testify against it, reasoning being, and I spoke to Judge Ubers yesterday after I went my way back. I couldn't reach him prior to, but he said they've got the same concerns. You don't take away judicial ability to, you know, carrot and stick. We do most of our felony fives through CBCF and community control and such, but eventually, some of them just have to go to prison. And the way the legislation is written, most time gray, it would also say, no felony fives, anything with a 12-month or less sentence would be, anybody who embezzles up to $7,400 wouldn't be prisonable. A gross sexual imposition charge in regard to a child.
Wow.
Minimal amounts of heroin dealing, trafficking, cocaine. There was a whole laundry list that wasn't addressed in the language, which, after long discussion, Director Moore said he would address in the final language. But still, where do we have the space for this? Again, $33 per day to handle these issues we've got, and if they have to go to our county jail and no longer can go to the prison system. And we told him, hey, why don't you just make everything a misdemeanor one, then, if you don't want to have a felony five? Felony fives were established in 1996. There was no felony five prior to that. But we know the state legislature wouldn't do that because one commissioner from Richland County, who had discussion with his common pleas judge down there, said, "Don't worry. Let me make them all misdemeanor ones. So, when somebody embezzles $7,400 bucks, I mean, you can't go to jail. Somebody improperly touches your child, you can't go to jail." Because they're trying to use it the opiate addiction. So, they're saying it's only the people, drug users, were charging felony fives. And discussions of taking felony twos and reducing them down to felony fives, not to have jury trial. So, long, but the Commissioners Association has come out strong against that.
Did Director Moore speak at all?
Oh, yeah.
And where did he, did he seem like he was going to be?
No, they were taking it, no, they were taking it right in the testimony today, the legislation to pass with maybe some tweaks in language, but we'll see. And they're doing a recodification vote tomorrow was brought up that I'm not up to date on, but changing some of the codification in regards to criminal activity and what they'd be. That's tomorrow. Friday, I was in Columbus all day. Nasty getting back. Hit a blizzard on my way back.
Tell me about that.
Three hours. But again, the Medicaid MCO sales tax revenue loss, again, it fills the state permanently. It only gives us a one-year, you know, backup, and then we're done. So, extremely important. We had an update on Bureau of Children and Mental Handicaps. The governor plans on moving the next budget program from Department of Health, Department of Medicaid. And there's always a concern what's going to happen with Medicaid with the new federal stuff. So, there was concerns about that. Just an update. Again, we went through the budget issues that are going to affect everyone, our general government. We do have one good thing. I'd like to thank Dan Ramos, our state representative, who signed on to a bill in finance that's coming out. Steve Arnt and Steve Hamley, both former county commissioners who serve on finance, both Republican caucus, introduced legislation in finance to have indigent attorney fees permanently funded at 50% reimbursement, which is one of our main tenets at Commissioners Association. I was texting Dan Ramos, because you're looking for everybody to get sign-ons, and Dan says, "Well, you'd have to send that information to me because Republican caucus doesn't share amendments with us."
They know.
So, the CCL sent that to him. He jumped right on board. We're trying to get 66 support, which is two-thirds of the chamber, that hopefully it will stick and then end up in the state senate with the same type of package.
Yeah, what we would do is we would send amendments to the chair, to our ranking member, and they would discuss it with the chair, and the chair would decide which amendments they would actually put in. The thing that was frustrating was that for the general public, and, you know, we need to be more transparent because the general public then didn't know who actually offered the amendment. And as far as I'm concerned, that should be public record.
Also, then we had a meeting also a couple hours with Senator Bob Peterson, who is the chair of the Senate Finance Committee, and going over our issues. Opioids are looking at voting equipment replacement. He told me it's DOA.
Wow.
There'll be no funding for that. There was a couple hundred million dollars asked by Houston's office. We're asking how we're supposed to do this. We're looking for a partnership similar to the eBooks done a couple years ago.
What's our, you know what our estimated cost is?
Not ours, no, it isn't. And they figured about $200 million from the state, and a 70-30 split, so probably a $100 million for all the counties. Again, they put some numbers here, but we'd actually, you know, tweak those all down. And Jim and I have had discussion on how many we'd have, and Paul Adams and I have had discussions. I serve on a committee with the Board of Elections officials, who've been working on this for three years. But Patterson, Peterson said basically, DOA, there won't be any funding for that.
Wow.
But he also called out the governor and said, "We're not in a recession. It's just a tight budget."
Mm-hmm, right.
There was discussion about a permitted $5 motor vehicle license tag for four counties. A civil rights legislation package was introduced by sites in the House, and then discussions with home rule townships adopting building codes. And we did get that one letter from the resident the other day who had concerns about how building codes were handled and dog barking.
Yeah, right.
And shooting guns. They should take state code if they don't have a local code or ordinance.
Well, the, there are some ordinances out there. Fortunately, the public thinks that we enforce barking door laws, and we don't. We are in charge of dogs that harch. A nuisance dog that's causing a disturbance that's on somebody's property right now is a matter of law enforcement, not a matter of the commissioners dealing with it. And a lot of people don't know that we get a lot of those calls.
Another discussion was brought up in regards to Veteran Service Commissions, trying to find alternative funding options to replace the half-mill, which was never really levied, just taking out of ours, and-
Which one was that, Commissioner?
Veteran Services Commission, the half percent.
They're going to, they're going to actually look at that?
Alternative funding. It's one of our discussion points. I mean, it's not a main, you know, it's not our top four that we're going after legislatively, but discussions on looking at that.
Like, where else could they get it from? Where are they looking to get that?
You didn't, you started, I'm not on that committee. I'm just updating what we went over at the board meeting.
You may want to let the public know what that is and why the veterans-
Well, basically, the Veteran Service Commission gets a half a mil of the county-
Up to a half a mil.
Right, they're allowed up to half a mil, five tenths of a mil per dollar on the assessed value of the property of the county. And there's no oversight for the Board of Commissioners. They give us a May budget, and we accept the budget.
Couple of years ago, they changed the law. We used to, they used to have to submit it, and we used to have to approve it.
Right.
That was questionable even then, and then they omitted the section.
Correct.
It's a very funky section of the code. It leaves a lot of ambiguity with regard to the responsibilities. But that said, the inside millage, when they passed that for veterans a millennium ago, it seems, they just did it, but all the inside millage was saturated.
Yeah.
What it was supposed to do is give them inside millage, but since everybody had already absorbed the, all the 10 mils, a little, excuse me, had already used all the inside millage, the 10 mills, there was no place for them to go, other than take it away from the county.
Right.
While everybody else's millage remained unchanged. So, they're eligible for up, somewhat over $3 million of the inside millage that we receive as a county. And let's also point out that Lorain County is 89 out of 89 counties.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, excuse me, 88 out of 88 counties. Good, I just added another one. We're going to annex some from Indiana. But we're dead last in inside millage to begin with. Don't ask me how that happened. That way, that goes back, you know, 50, 60 years ago. But as the ninth largest county population, fourth largest county territorial size, and we're 88 in inside millage.
I'm guessing because we were so prosperous back then with the steel mills, and does that have anything to do with it?
People have suggested that, that because there was less need.
Right.
The division came out, that the county got a flaw less of the inside millage. But it's a big issue. I'm glad they're looking at it, Commissioner. It's something that really needs to be adequately addressed and so that the veterans can get service correctly, but that it doesn't continue to erode the funding that's supposed to be available for county services.
So, we all want to get the cake, so I won't talk too much more, but it's been a busy week, so.
Well, I just want to thank you for all that you do with County Commissioners Association there in Ohio. I know I talked to you Friday on your way back. I think you survived almost two near accidents, white-out conditions, and everything else, yeah. It can be a crazy ride sometimes, but thank you for all that you're doing on that.
That's why you decided to stay home.
Yeah, right. Just wanted to commend Tom Smith, our newest appointment to the Lorain County Community College Board. Great respect for Tom. He's always giving back a lot to the community, and couldn't ask for a couple better hands to be on the wheel to keep things stable at the LCC Board. The township meeting, Township Association meeting, attended that in Rochester Township. They were discussing changing some of their bylaws, also having some discussions about their fare booth coming up this year. But they've got their big spring banquet coming up next month. Always a fun event, great food, and just one of my favorite meetings of the year to attend. Congratulations to Jack Kilroy and all the organizers of the Sober Seventeenth, which took place on Friday. Took my wife there and just really, really enjoyed the event a lot. You know, that's one of those days during the year that's very tough for folks to work through who battle addictions and, but just- who battle addictions and, uh, but just, uh, strongly community-supported event as well, too. So congratulations to everyone who supported that and helped organize it. Congratulations also to the city of Elyria, I saw the mayor, Bill Byrd, and others were unveiling the marker for Elyria's two-hundredth anniversary. Hard to believe it's been two-hundred years, but, um, things are moving forward very well with, uh, a lot of their celebratory plans around the two-hundredth anniversary. And also had a chance to meet with our new administrative judge, Judge Ubers, talk about the importance of everybody working together and really looking forward to working with Judge Ubers. Also sat down and talked with Judge John Maraldi about the Drug Recovery Court and the serious, serious challenges we face in this county. He's doing, uh, amazing work with that court, and, uh, you know, I, I just wanna say to those who I continue to hear from, who say, "Well, these are individuals who, you know, they need to take responsibility for their own behavior, and they led themselves down this road, it's their responsibility to get themselves out." You know, we have a responsibility to help lift people up and help them get back on track, and, you know, just remember that these folks, uh, are individuals, sons and daughters, and husbands, wives, brothers, sisters.